Thank you for being here. I'd like to call the five o'clock work session to order. Dr. Hargens, if you'd like to introduce the work session, please. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you, Chair Porter. Jefferson County Public Schools is proud to be a district of innovation, and it's been an exciting process to go through the development and proposing schools of innovation. And of course, as everyone knows, two schools were recommended for implementation, Catalpa and Reach, and it's been exciting. And I would just focus everybody to say, why do we innovate? Innovation is about doing things differently to get an improved result. So that's really why we undertook this process. So Jonathan Lo, the Director of Strategy, is going to work you through responses to the questions. And remember, we had some meetings with parents and affected staff, and some other things regarding the two proposals of Catalpa and Reach, and then update you about Metro Museum and Next Generation. So I'll turn it over to Jonathan.
Okay. Thank you very much. So just to give you an idea of what we're going to try and go through in this work session, there's a lot, so we're going to move relatively fast-paced to make sure that we stay within the time that we have. First, we want to make sure that we're providing responses to the questions that you posed at the last session that we talked about, and then give you a brief summary of the meetings that we had with affected parents and staff, talk a bit about the communications that has occurred and is going to occur moving forward to make sure people are informed, give you a thumbnail set of budget estimates, talk a bit about the cross-functional team and implementation leaders. And then finally, as Dr. Hargens stated, talk about what's going on with the other two finalists, the Next Generation Community Schools and the Metro Museum Magnet School. So we're just going to hop right in, and this is just sort of a question and answer. These were the questions that I heard you raise at the last meeting, and trying to give you some answers to that. We're going to start with Catalpa School, which is the one that the recommendation is to put the Catalpa School concept at Mopin Elementary. What kind of renovations are required, and what is the estimated cost? We believe that no major renovations are needed. We are looking at a $100,000 renovation allowance in the 15, 16-year fiscal year budget, if that's needed. Typically, when you have, you know, a move within a school, things come up that need to be dealt with. So we, you know, we'll just be prepared for that. The question was raised both in your meeting and also with, in meetings with families, whether the school would retain its name, being named for Milburn T. Mopin. Our recommendation to the board, it is a board decision what schools are named, is that it retain Milburn T. Mopin in the name. There are a couple of different ways that you could do that. Our thought is, you know, have that conversation, solicit input from the public, and, you know, come up with something that works for people. The next question is the grade configuration for 2015-16, and how will middle schools be added? Our thought is to start with a K-5 school, essentially, starting with, you know, it's going to be a significant thing to get that up and running, and then adding additional grades is additional work, and we thought we could do that over time. The next set of questions were related to human resources. And I first want to say that the details of what this is going to look like are really going to be hammered out in discussions and conversations with JCPS staff and JCTA, and make sure that that's all negotiated and that people are upfront. So these are general thoughts about what's going to happen, but, you know, details to come. So the first question is, what would happen to current Mopin teachers? And just like, current Mopin teachers would be eligible to apply for the positions at the school with the understanding that there would be a long-term commitment they would be making to Waldorf-inspired education. There are going to be some folks that maybe that's really not what they're looking for in their professional lives, or they have a different perspective on education, and they'd have the opportunity to find a position in another school. Students that don't have Waldorf training would be required to be trained and get certification over the course of four years. The question was raised both by you and also in meetings with parents and staff, you know, what would the training look like and how much it would cost? It's extensive. Four annual, two-week summer institutes, so that's two weeks per year for four years, that would be leading to a certification. There would also be additional Waldorf professional development that would be throughout the school year, school-based. The cost of that two-week summer institutes is $1,000 per teacher per year, and the recommendation is that those trainings be paid for by JCPS as part of implementation of this, this school concept. Question was whether professional development credit would be available, and would there be an opportunity for Rank One certification? My understanding is professional development credit is, would be available. Discussions are underway with Spalding to develop a Waldorf program that would lead to Rank One. That is not set yet. It's a work in progress, but eventually, there's, there seems to be a good possibility that that would be something that could happen. Continuing on with the Catalpa School and Mopin Elementary, there were some questions connected to sort of like, who gets served at Mopin right now? So here are some demographic information. Right now, K-5 enrollment is at 458. Early childhood enrollment is 33. Ninety-four, 90-plus percent of the kids are eligible for free and reduced-priced lunch. 5.2% receive ESL services. 13.9% receive ECE services. And then there's a breakdown by race that's provided. Very high percentage. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't get this forward. I apologize. So, high percentage of students of color, and you can see what those are. Regarding, okay, students who come, what percentage of students come from the immediate area? It's broken down in a couple of different ways. The first one is, of the students who live in the resides area, there are 497 students that live in the resides area, 167 of those students from the resides are 34% attend Mopin. Of the students that are actually in the school, there are 458, and again, there are 167 of those, or 36% are resides kids. Another question was, what is the building capacity of Mopin Elementary? It's 675 is the, is the student capacity with 33 full-size classrooms. And so, you know, that was one of the things that we were thinking about. This is a school that has 450 current, or 490 if you include early childhood, and a capacity of 675. There's, there's room to grow there. Another school that's impacted by this proposal is BIC Elementary, which is the one that currently has a Waldorf-inspired program, and you had requested additional information about BIC. The current enrollment at BIC is 540 students. Early child, that's K-5. Early childhood is 95. And then again, that question about, okay, are these resides kids or not? Of the, so there are 823 kids, children in the resides area, and 234 of them are 28% attend BIC. And then of the 540 students in BIC, 234 of them are reside students, or 43%. And then there was a question about the magnet programs that currently exist, in terms of like, how many children are in those. 15.5% of them, or 84 are in the Waldorf program, and 15% are in the talent development programs. Again, BIC has two, currently has two magnet programs. And then the building capacity, this is, they have, they have a enrollment right now of 540. The capacity is 640 students with 30 full-size classrooms. There were some other questions connected to BIC Elementary, you know, just to make sure that, as we're doing something new somewhere else, that, that we're paying close attention to what's going on in this, this existing school. So the question was, has, was raised, you know, BIC already has a Waldorf program. Why, why is the recommendation to implement at Mopin as opposed to BIC, which already has that? There are kind of two main components to the thinking. First is that the Magnet School of America recommendation, which we think is, is a, is a good one, is that there should be one school-wide magnet program in each school. If you're going to have a magnet program, having multiple sort of dilutes the power and the ability of the, the school staff to really focus in on, on doing that with excellence and fidelity. The second thing is that in conversations with, with folks at BIC, their preference is to, is to move to a stronger implementation of talent development. And so, those put together made us think about looking somewhere else. And then the, the question was asked, what are we going to do to make sure that that remaining talent development program is, is, is strong and viable? That's actually a question that was asked by the BIC principal, so she's already thinking, has a forward-thinking view, and wants to have conversations with district leadership about what it would look like, and what kind of supports the district can move forward. In my mind, that aligns very well with some of the recommendations of the magnet review, that really thinks that the district needs to strengthen the way that we support all of our magnet programs, and, and that's, you know, work that will be ongoing and undertaken. So, as, you know, as a general matter, I think the, the plan would be for the magnet office to work with the BIC principal and their staff to develop a plan. So I can't tell you exactly what that's going to look like, because the people, you know, we need to really work that out and make sure it's a robust response. And then I, I note that there are some funds that are currently allocated to the Waldorf-inspired program. A consideration, as you think about the budget, would, is whether, in some kind of transitional phase, to kind of bolster what's going on in talent development, if you maintained that and pushed it toward that. That's, that's an idea, but, you know, something to think about. So on to the next part, which is Louisville Reach Academy.
Take questions.
Okay. Yeah, that's a lot of data, and I'm sorry, we're.
Ms. Hadaway.
Thank you. Now, when we talk about Catalpa School, and I think it should stay for Milburn Mopin. He was a wonderful man. I was very fortunate to work, work with Milburn. But now, when you say Mopin has, it's an elementary school, and so you're going to add up to eighth grade, and you say you wouldn't have to make any changes. Well, you will for middle school kids as they come in. You're going to have to change some of the things for middle school kids at elementary schools.
Right. So we've, we've had a good deal of discussion internally, and based on the way that the facilities folks talk about it, in terms of like, actual renovation, movement from elementary to a middle school, there's, there's no significant renovation that would need to be done. In terms of furniture and those kinds of things, yes, some additional, you know, expenditure would be done, but it, it's not expected to be significant.
Yeah, but restrooms would have to be.
Well, actually, restrooms, moving from elementary to middle and high school, pretty much, they all have standard-sized commodes that, that look the same whether you're at Klondike, or Mopin, or at a middle school or high school. So, you know.
Since my kids were in school.
Well, so for early childhood, there is some modification that needs to happen, and, but that's really, and so like, if you go to those schools, you're going to find something that looks like.
Yeah. But when we talk about the training, is there any way for, not that, to get grants to help with that Waldorf training? You know, I mean, that's going to be pretty expensive. And I know when we did Lincoln, that the arts people got some grants to help, and I'm just not sure if the Waldorf people wouldn't be able to do the same thing, to pay for their summer professional development.
I, I don't know the answer to that. Later in the proposal, we do, we do lay out what the cost is, and certainly, you know, getting access to funds external to the, our general fund is always a good idea.
Yeah, because that was, and then, I still have a concern about BIC with moving that program, and, and I don't know how many, there's not many children in the talent development. Would the whole school become a talent development? Or would it just still be an option, that they wouldn't have to make the whole school?
So it would, it would remain a magnet program at BIC Elementary, and so you would get a set of kids that are arriving at that school specifically because they want to be, participate in the talent development program. And, you know, my hope would be that as we work to strengthen that program, you would get a, a greater number of students that would be wanting to participate. But there would also be a component of kiddos that would be assigned through, through the cluster assignment process.
I had someone ask me, they thought the Waldorf and the talent kind of, every once in a while, interacted with each other. Is that, have you all heard that? That was a call I got.
I'm, I'm sure that's the case, but I don't have the details about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Duncan.
Did you talk to the parents of the kids who are in the Waldorf program right now at BIC, to see what that interest is in moving then to Mopin?
So there were some parents who were, were from BIC who were there, and I would say, we're going to get to, you know, the, the meetings per se, but just in response to your question, I would say that they're generally supportive of the program, believe in Waldorf education, and would be very interested in, you know, continuing that in a different location. That was my sense of it. One of the things that having a school that has fairly significant excess capacity means that we would be able to accommodate people who are interested in staying with the Waldorf program, coming into, into, you know, the, the facility at Mopin, and also allow students who are Mopin students right now and want to stay there because they care about that community, both of those, both of those could be accommodated, we think.
Mr. Hadaway, and then Ms. Westlin.
Can you tell me what a talent development magnet is?
So we, it is a, an effort to use individualized instructions to encourage students to, to meet their fullest potential, and to work on opportunities for learning that are connected to their interests and their, and their abilities. I think that there's work to be done, maybe to strengthen, and, and to strengthen what exactly that means and how it's played out in the school.
I think the opportunity to go to one, one theme gives you the opportunity to strengthen that theme, and to strengthen the Waldorf theme by having those 80 students be in a, in a Waldorf school. So, and Magnet Schools of America, remember, that's now a connection of schools that have themes that are similar, that we've never taken advantage of. And somebody asked about grants. There are magnet school grants that, that schools or districts get to really build capacity within magnet schools. We just haven't been connected to that. So that's an option, too.
What is, were there hurdles? Were there roadblocks for Waldorf not to be fully embraced at BIC? What were the, because I remember in the presentation that there were some elements of Waldorf education there, but, and I'm hearing there's a program, a magnet, but what's, what's the big leap from Catalpa to this, or from that?
I, I think there are kind of two parts to it, and this is just, you know, listening to what's going on. And one of them is sort of that, that bifurcation of focus within a school makes it a challenge if you're a school leader that's dealing with both of those things, and then the other things that are, you know, in front of you. That gets complicated. And so if you can simplify and pursue excellence, that, that can strengthen things. The second thing that I think is stronger about what the proposal brings is, you know, the, the keen focus on additional training and professional development to deepen the knowledge and capacity of teachers to really implement with fidelity.
And, and the principal was, the principal of BIC was, in one of the original meetings where we talked about it, and said that the school preferred to be talent development rather than Waldorf, because we thought that was the logical thing, is see if they could develop into a full Waldorf school. But that's the feedback we got from the school.
Ms. Westlin.
Thank you. Excuse me. I can certainly see where a Waldorf-type of school really would need to be a whole school because it's so unique. And I, this question I have, I think we might have brought it up last time, but it, I don't know if you'll have a full answer, but it's definitely something you need to watch. Because it's so unique, Waldorf, there's a concern, I'm sure people have, about student mobility, especially children from lower-income families who often move around a lot. They, it probably wouldn't be great for them to move from Waldorf to a regular classroom or to a traditional school, or, so a great effort's going to have to be made to, if they move, to transport them there. So it's, all of this has this transportation, you know, even the move from the Phoenix, where the Phoenix School was, to where it is, has changed transportation and caused some different considerations. So that mobility issue is something pretty serious. If you, if you haven't learned to read by, you know, age seven, or it's not an emphasis, you don't want to go to some other school where that's been really taught hard at kindergarten on.
So that was a critical reason why I, I recommended that there be a magnet component to, a district-wide magnet component to the Catalpa School, is because of that mobility concern. With a district-wide magnet, if you, if you get those kids to have a magnet override, they can have transportation even if, if they're moving their household. The other thing I, I do want to share is that the Catalpa folks, in a community conversation where this, this issue was arrived, you know, what happens if I move and my child is going to be attending a more traditional kind of school? You know, what's the transition going to be like? And they said it would be a challenge, that, that there would, there, there is a difficulty there that students might experience, because, you know, this, this is a plan that gets you from K-8 and does a good job, but if you stop in the middle, it's, it's more challenging.
That's just something you'll have to monitor and figure out along the way.
Mr. Jones.
So my concern, as I said two weeks ago, is that we're being too timid about innovation, and I don't understand how a four-year transition that starts with a handful, I mean, it sounds like a handful of kids and a handful of teachers, most of whom it sounds like are going to be the same teachers who are in the school today, who get two weeks of training, is going to be anything to jump up and down about. I mean, convince me that we are actually doing something innovative here rather than something incremental.
So that's, that's a challenge, and I, I think that you're echoing things that I hear from the Catalpa folks as well. And I guess my thinking is that that's, that's something to be navigated, because we need to both hold on to that, that, you know, work toward excellence and fidelity of implementation, and make sure that the people who are already at Mopin are, are treated well and have the opportunity to, you know, excel in their professional lives. And so that's, that's the work of our cross-functional team, to figure out how that's going to work, and make sure we don't lose the power that's available, but also make sure that we're not, just make sure that we're treating everybody fairly. And that's, that's, that's a big, that's big, difficult work.
But, but the, the concept isn't really to do this incrementally. The concept is to have in 15-16, this school be a Catalpa school, so that, and people have choice, that parents understand that it's a Catalpa school, understand what that means, and that there's opportunity in student assignment to choose a different school within your cluster, or another magnet school. So that communications piece is really important, that you understand that this is going to be a Waldorf school. And I think staff members also need to understand that you have to commit to training, and that you have to commit to being a Waldorf school. So this isn't, I know we had originally talked about, like, starting at K, at kindergarten and incrementally going up, but we've changed direction to say that this will be a complete Catalpa school in 15-16. So it, it's not just the 80 students that come from BIC. The kindergarteners who choose it will know that they're going to grow up K-5 and eventually K-8 in a school that is a Waldorf method. So, so I think we changed directions from what we originally said. So it's not slow. Now, the risk is, people won't want to, you know, we won't be able to fill the school. That people, when given the choice, I don't think the risk is that you wouldn't be able to attract teachers that wanted to do it, but I think a risk is that you wouldn't get enough students to have a full school, that people would abandon the concept. But that's not the feeling you got at the community meeting.
So let me, let me ask, because that risk, I'm, I mean, I'm willing to take that on. It seems like a good idea. If people don't like it, then they won't go there. But where's the Catalpa principle coming from?
Well, they would, they would have to be, you know, the, the person who is hired would need to have, you know.
So we're searching for, we are bringing in a new principal?
Recruiting for a new principal.
Recruiting for a new principal.
And, and with appropriate experience and certifications.
And are we working with JCTA to really get a mix of teachers there who are gung-ho about this particular type of teaching?
We absolutely will. That's work that's.
And Dr. Razor has started conversations, but.
Okay. Because I think it's, I mean, as long as we're going at it and everybody is into it.
Right. I, it, it is important to make sure that everybody's on board and heading in the same direction when you're starting something big like this.
Yeah, because if innovation just happens to people, it doesn't work. So.
Yeah, that important piece is the students choose to be there because it's Waldorf, and the teachers choose to be there because it's Waldorf. And the commitment is both on the part of the teachers and the students.
Ms. Hadaway.
How do, you know, the, in moment's going to start out kind of low. Right away, you're not going to put in middle school, right? I mean.
Not right away.
No. So it will be kind of a little bit at a time. What if the classes get so small that, you know, it's, it's, because it's a new concept, and, and I'm not sure that people really understand what it is. I'm not sure we've really explained what it is, if we've really.
Well, so I'm, my personal perspective is that there are going to be a set of folks who are interested in going to Mopin because it's Mopin, and, and, you know, they'll attend through the cluster program, and then there are going to be another set of folks, and they, I think that they will be attracted to this, that will want to come. And then there are also going to be kids that get assigned through the regular cluster student assignment process, and it may be that Mopin isn't their, their first or second choice, but if they're moving in the middle of the school year, that's where they get assigned. So I, the, the problem of like, small, like, not being able to fill classes is, is.
So I was saying that all kids that go there will not be, really want the Waldorf program. They're just going to fill the school, and.
It's going, it's going to be just like, it's just like BIC is now, or Mopin is now, which is that they have a district-wide magnet program that brings a set of kids in, and then there's another set of kids that are there because they were assigned through the cluster assignment process.
So it really won't be a Waldorf school. It'll be a magnet. It, I thought it was supposed to be a whole school of Waldorf.
It is, it is a whole school Waldorf school, and, but kids will get there, some because they select to be there, and some because through the.
They're assigned there.
Yes.
They'll be in Waldorf program.
And then if they have, if they have a concern about, that they don't want to be in the Waldorf program, the student assignment office will work hard to make sure they find something that works for them.
So the communication about where are you and what you can expect is really important, so you can exercise your option to request something else.
Okay, just several points of clarity, one of which you talked about, JCPS, we are going to train staff. We're going to hire a principal that is Waldorf-trained. Do we currently have someone in the system that is Waldorf? What is it training to be a Waldorf principal? I know that when we went with the Montessori program, we had to send people to Cincinnati. So what are the requirements? Is that a two-week summer program? Because we will be, need to hire people before a two-week summer program. So how do we get this principal, the leader, in place so that we can get about the business of, of staff in the school? How do we make that happen?
So I don't, I don't have a definitive answer, but I, my understanding, based on what the Catalpa folks said in the, in the family, in the meeting with families, is that there are a large number of trained, certified teachers in Jefferson County Public Schools that aren't. schools that aren't in a, they aren't in a Waldorf program, but they've been trained in Waldorf. And my guess is that there's going to be a set of those folks that also have principal certification. There's also a possibility that there are other folks that would be interested in, in, you know, the unique adventure of starting a, you know, a full-fledged Waldorf program in a public school.
Does our HR system tell us who's Waldorf-trained? Are we able to go into the system and say that?
I do not know that.
Not, not, that would be, have to be something that we put on as additional when we post a administrative position. We have desired qualities, and they'll have to be desired qualities, and then someone will have to document it.
Okay, that's administrative position, but what we heard at the meeting at Mopin was that there are people in the district working for JCPS now that are Waldorf-trained that are working in other schools. So my question is, if we go into our database of teachers, is there something that tells us how many people are Waldorf-trained at this time? Okay, so, the other question is, once I'm trained on Waldorf, do I go back every year? Do I go back every two years? Or I could have been trained twenty years ago, and I'm now eligible to teach because we have a Waldorf school? Is that, I'm just trying to clarify, because these are some of the questions that were asked at the parent meeting.
So I, I do not have a definitive answer on the, the requirement, you know, how often you need to get recertified for, for Waldorf training.
Okay. And then, Dr. Razor, at another point, you talked about increasing early childhood classes that would be available, and you mentioned that you were going to put more early childhood at Mopin. So is that now off the table because we're putting Waldorf at Mopin?
We are still going to keep some early childhood at Mopin, because the idea behind it was starting and moving through really P through eight. But there will probably be a reduced number now since we see an increase in enrollment at Mopin due to the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade coming.
Okay. Want to go back to what Ms. Hadad said about the importance of Mopin staying on the school name. Mr. Mopin was superintendent. He has family. He has two daughters in this community. That's a community issue. It's not an innovative issue. It's a community issue. So if that name must stay on that building, or else, we can name another school, because you just don't do that, you know, along with being creative. So that's really important, that, that we say that. What does this do to the impact of the Mopin cluster? As we look at Mopin, we have Bloom, Inglehart, Hawthorne, St. Matthews, and Wheatley. How does this impact that cluster at all as we talk about keeping our numbers where they're supposed to be?
I, I think that there are a couple of things that, that I can see happen. One of the reasons why this cluster was attractive is that, that we think that there's going to be a set of kiddos that, or parents who are interested in having their kids attend a Waldorf school that are in that cluster. And this could actually create space in some other schools. And then, there's also, right now, there's, there's a relatively low percentage of kids within the Mopin resides that, that choose to attend Mopin. And so if we can raise that number, that's actually, that's actually cost-effective for us as a district, and it also is, you know, telling us something about what this, what the school is offering their students.
My last comment is I've attended most of the meeting of the parents at Mopin Elementary. Like to thank all the staff members that were there. There were very positive statements from parents from BIC who are involved in the Waldorf program, so they spoke to it in a positive manner. So this is not something that people have not embraced. They're just going to embrace it in another building. So I wanted to say thank you to all the staff members that were there, the staff that was there from both schools, and the parents, because there was a, I thought, an adequate amount of interest for that one meeting. I don't think all questions were answered, but I think that it was a good start, so thank you for that.
Thanks.
Can I ask one other thing?
Ms. Hadad?
When, when we change schools like this, Bob, doesn't that change the baseline, so that their baseline, when they're tested, it'll start over? Yeah, you.
If it's forty percent of the, of the kids
Yeah, population?
Something that we did, if forty percent of the student population changes, then the school's baseline changes.
So basically, in these two schools, that will happen?
I'm not sure.
There's a potential for it to happen, okay? Until we actually see who is choosing and how many kids come from BIC, and then we do the numbers. But if all eighty-one came from BIC, and it's a four hundred kids, that's, that's pretty close to forty percent.
Twenty percent.
It, it's, it's like a little bit less, so, so we have to see about the other kids, but it'd be close.
Yeah. Well, I was concerned, because if a lot of them don't decide to come, we get all these new kids, then that's going to be hard on them, that could affect their testing, because they're going to be learning a whole new way of, of doing things, so we have to be sure that, and I know when we've changed schools like that, that the test, the testing does
If we change schools, when we, if, if we've done something, kids leaving from school are added into that forty percent because of change. New kids coming into the school add to that forty percent. So we know the potential of who's coming, it's that who might be leaving.
Well, I knew we changed it when we changed the Olmsteads, you know, and some of the other schools, when we changed them to different programs. So I think that's important, because it's going to be a whole new way of looking at things. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Jonathan, sorry.
No. So, we're going to move on to the Louisville Reach Academy, and there are kind of two components to that. One is the movement of the Phoenix School in Early Childhood to the Klondike Building, and then the, the other, the movement of the Klondike folks to the Myers Building. So I split those questions out. The first, are there any facility issues putting middle school and high school students in an elementary building? And the answer is really no. You know, the building itself won't need major renovation. The furniture will follow students. Toilets are standard size, and that shouldn't be a significant issue.
Excuse me, just a second on that. Are, are you remembering the science labs and things? Because we still, it took quite a bit of renovation for the Olmstead School, because, or the Olmstead Schools, because they, they were, I mean, the girl's school was an elementary school, and it always has had a difference in its layout.
Our, our understanding of the way Phoenix is operated is it's lots of virtual learning, where there is not, I mean, we're kind of, it's a different way of thinking about school than a traditional way that we would think about a traditional high school, especially we have the same situation upcoming at Phoenix as we do for the Catalpa School, where we'll be hiring a new principal, who hopefully will embrace new and, even further new and innovative ideas toward the next-generation community school idea that we were presented. So, we did, if you see, we allocated fifty thousand more than we did in the, in the other school, based on some, some other needs we might have, but really, that, that fifty thousand dollars is an allowance for more technology.
Well, just keep in mind, even, even though it's a technology-based school, it still has Common Core standards it has to address, and the science standards are project-based. They're not, they're not just computer-based. They're, they're project-based, where kids have to, to be active in using and doing things in labs. So I think we need to keep that in mind when we, when we plan for this. It's not, they're not, just not all going to be sitting at computers on this.
Does the Phoenix School currently have science labs?
Myers, Myers Middle School had some science facilities that
I mean, there's no such thing as Myers Middle School.
No, I'm sorry. You're, you're absolutely right. The, the facility there, where they're at, had some from the previous, when it was a middle school. I can't speak to whether they had them, just based on my recollection, where they had them when they, when they were at Valley and Stewart, whether they used those or not. And one of the great things about districts of innovation, though, is we are able to apply for waivers. We are able to look at things differently than maybe they've been done in the past. And there are ways of, of accomplishing those things. And again, like I said, that is one of the reasons that we did allocate fifty thousand dollars more. Having done a walkthrough of Klondike, the building's in really, really good shape. It's really clean. It's, you know, doesn't need a lot of paint, doesn't need a lot of flooring, that type of thing. So hopefully, if things would come up, the way we've approached this is similar to when you're building a house. We've given allowances, rather than saying it's going to cost this much, but, you know, where would you like this money spent to, to accomplish the goal?
And when we visited Wagner, remember, Expanded Leadership? There were great portable science tables in the labs, remember, at Wagner, that were portable. So I think there's a way to accommodate what you're saying, Ms. Duncan, without a huge cost, which I think is the concern, so.
So the, the next question is, would the move permit the opportunity for growth? And we believe that it would. Right now, there are two hundred and thirty-four students in the Phoenix School, in a school that has a capacity of about a thousand. So they're using thirty-two rooms, which is an average of seven point three students per room. So, you know, in our, from our perspective, it's an underutilized space. Moving into the Klondike, even assuming nine early childhood rooms, there'd be twenty-one rooms for two hundred and twenty-two students, which is a little over ten per classroom, which again is a pretty small number that kind of holds on to, you know, some of the things that I think families like about the Phoenix School. The question about opportunities for growth, I could see two ways to happen. Is, one is, is, you know, if you move into a more innovative use of technology to individualize learning, and there's an opportunity where you could increase the number of students per room and per teacher, and still get, you know, good educational outcomes, which is ultimately the goal. Or, you know, another possibility down the road, if the, if the board and the district decided to do it, is that you can move early childhood classrooms, which are pretty easily moved from one place to another. That, that would be another opportunity to expand. And then there was real concern about the fact that if, you know, if this is, recommendation is approved, that this would be, you know, the second or third time that, that families have been moved from one, and they, they kind of wanted an assurance that, you know, this would be the Phoenix School moving forward for the foreseeable future. And, you know, our recommendation would be that, yes, indeed, that's what we are planning. And then the, the second part of it is the movement of the Klondike Lane School as Reach Academy moving into the Myers Building. A question was raised whether there's a, any issues that arise from moving elementary school students into a middle and high school building, similar to the other, to the inverse. Really, there are no significant changes would be, need to be made. The furniture would follow the students. They have standard-sized bathrooms. There were some modifications that were made to the Myers facility, based on when we moved to early childhood, so that would also be something that could, you know, be part of the mix. The question was also asked about how the middle school's grades would be added, and again, we were thinking about a K five start, and then adding a grade in each subsequent year till they get to K eight. And then, can the Myers Building accommodate growth to K eight? Absolutely. You know, forty-two classrooms with a capacity of a thousand and ten students. Klondike currently has an enrollment of five hundred and fifty-four, so there would be plenty of room and opportunity for growth. So then there were questions about, you know, who, about demographics and the, the geography in the area. We, the, the Myers Building and Klondike Lane Building are both in the four oh two one eight zip code, which was one of the ones that was identified in the proposal. Currently, the demographics are, is an interesting picture. There are five hundred and fifty-four students. Seventy, almost seventy-five percent are eligible for free or reduced-price lunch. That's over four hundred students. Twenty point four percent receive ESL services. Nine point two receive ECE services. And the racial diversity is, is pretty, is, is pretty diverse. You get a, a good mix of African-American, white, Latino students in that, in that school. And then regarding, you know, how many kids are resides students? Of the eight hundred and fifty-six kids who live in the resides area, three hundred and thirty-nine or forty percent go to Klondike. Of the five hundred and fifty-four students in the building, sixty-one percent of them attend Klondike. So regarding human resources questions, again, I preface this by saying, you know, details about this are going to be worked out in, in, you know, serious discussions with JCTA and JCPS folks. And, but that said, would the current Klondike staff and principal move to the new building and operate as the Louisville Reach Academy? Our answer is yes. That's, that's how we, we envision it. And then regarding Phoenix School staff, would they move to the Klondike Lane Building if, if the Phoenix School moves? And the answer there is yes, that's how we envision it. And then regarding current staff students, serving the students there in those ECE self-contained classrooms, if that, if that were to move, and that decision has not been made, what's going to happen with those classrooms? But essentially, what would happen to the, the staff would be determined on where the classrooms land. And I'm sorry that I don't have a definitive answer, that some of these things really are, are so, there's just a lot of detail that you have to work through and try to be forthright about the things we know and the things we don't.
But that's a normal process for ECE to place self-contained classrooms, so they look at the placement every year.
That's right.
Could, could you leave the early childhood at Myers? And because it's going to be a, you know, K, and then maybe eventually they would go into that program?
So, that's, that's one of the conversations and one of the possibilities. There would have to be a change in, you know, an agreement with parents, a change in their IEPs about what, they're, they're expected to be able to have integrated, integrated interactions with students who are not in the self-contained classroom of the same age. And so if we put an elementary school there
I mean, early childhood.
Her question is early childhood.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
No, early childhood. Because it, it is going to be an elementary school.
Something, something we had discussed was, and this was when talking with, with some of the founders, or the, the, the concept team from them, was if we identify early childhood students who remain in that school, because one of the things that we talk about with the Reach Academy and Catalpa, but one of the things we talk about with Reach Academy is the, limiting the transitions that kids have, and many of our early childhood students go to early childhood in one location and then go to kindergarten in another. So maybe not keeping all of the locations there, but definitely having an early childhood component, that then, you know, a student starts at three or four in a school and stays there through age fourteen. So it's, that's definitely something we'll investigate.
Well, I agree with Linda. If, if you're going to move a, a middle school and a high school kids into an elementary school, you're going to have to make some renovations with science labs, because they, even though they, you say it's just computer, it's not. It never has been. It was, they thought it was going to start out that everything was just on computer, but they have to do the curriculum and the core curriculum content, too. So, I mean, you know, it's a change from elementary to middle and high, you know? But I just thought maybe some of the early childhood could stay at Myers and then give that, really give Phoenix School room to grow, because they're limited, you know, you average how many kids are in a classroom.
Yeah.
But that was the biggest complaint I got from the teachers, that you're taking, they have thirty rooms now, and they'll go down to twenty-two. And these are kids, it's, it's a different school, it's not a regular classroom school.
I know we're not finished with your presentation yet, but there seem to be some questions, so I'm just hesitating to do some of the questions first, but I know you're not finished with your presentation. So, Mr. Brady, and then Ms. Duncan, and then Ms. Westlin. And maybe we won't finish the presentation.
Yeah.
The reality of it is, because we have many pages to go. Mr. Brady, Ms. Duncan, Ms. Westlin.
Thank you, Chair Porter. Do apologize for the early question. I was hoping to get through this, but I have a feeling I might, we might run out of time on this. But I do want to express a concern here regarding the Reach Academy. It looks like your timeline on this, of rolling this out over a four-year period. I understand why we have that timeline for Catalpa School. I think it's a bit timid for Catalpa School, but I understand it, because there's an existing school there, and you're pretty much adding a program there. This is a different story. This is a brand-new school that we can pretty much start up from the get-go, and I believe that this is far too timid of a schedule. We have the ability just to be able to start brand-new at this school, and I, given the type of school it is, and the fact that it's supposed to target our most needy students with this particular concept, I believe there's a sense of urgency that's not communicated with this particular schedule, at least from my point of view. I would like to encourage this superintendent and your staff to be able to relook at this, this schedule, and see if you might be able to pare that down in a quicker timeline to be able to meet the needs. be able to meet the needs quicker for these at-res students.
So, just, I, I hear that, and I, I understand it. There's a logistical challenge that comes with this. If we were going to go to a straight K-8, or move, you know, significantly faster, that would entail a change to the middle school boundaries, and that's a complicated process, and you want to make sure you get it right, because you have to live with it for a good long while. And so that would be part of the work, and at least from my perspective, having been, you know, Director of Student Assignment for a few years, at least taking a year to figure out how to do that correctly and well, taking all the moving parts into, into account would be, you know, would be my recommendation. Now, it could be that we could do an accelerated implementation, but that it, you know, I, I would recommend that we not try and do it for the 15, 16-
And I'm not necessarily saying we go, you know, big bang from day one-
Right.
But I do believe four years is way too long. I think maybe we can do it in two?
Yeah, we can definitely take a close look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Duncan, and then Ms. Westlin.
Does that mean that we'll, we will need to revisit how we've redrawn all those kids out of Myers into other schools, and we're going to have to, we would have to look at that again?
That's, that's part of the, that's part of the conversation. I mean, there'd be a set of kids that would be, that would be Klondike kids, right? And they were, they had, you know, a great K-5 experience and want to continue on to middle school. My expectation, however, is that some of those children are going to decide, really, they want to go to Lassiter or Crosby or another school to get what a, a larger middle school experience would look like. And those things are going to be different, and the people are going to be making choices. So, yes, there would be a, a need to, to take another look at middle school boundaries.
My real question was about the concept of a two-mile radius-
Mm-hmm.
-which, which attracted me the most to, to the Reach Academy, that because it gives access to people, I mean, I'm envisioning a community that maybe doesn't have a great deal of transportation to get around to school, so two miles is something that you can overcome. You can reach school and, and take part in parent activities, take part in your kids' activities-
Right.
-whatever those are. So, so in my mind, that was the big plus I saw in Reach Academy. And now, it's confused, because Reach Academy is, now we moved it to Myers, and now, how do we do the two-mile radius thing?
So, I, I, the two-mile radius was what is, what is in the proposal, it's not, it's not what we're bringing forward. Our, this, this is going to be a cluster school, and part of that is because we didn't want to disrupt, you know, the hard work that you all put in to, to think through what our cluster assignment process looks like. I do believe that you can get very close to what you're talking about within a cluster system, and the reason is, is because the Office of Student Assignment works really, really hard to help families that are in, in a school's cluster, stay, or in a school's resides, to stay at their reside school if they like to. We like that. It's, it's more efficient, it's less expensive. If people want to be there, you know, like 98% of kids that, that applied for their reside school as a kindergartner during last year's open enrollment, got into their, I mean, like, we put everybody in their reside school if we can. And so my thought is, like, right now, there's 61% of kids that, or rather, 40% of reside students attend Klondike. If people really like this, that number can rise, and we can always, you know, we, we, we give preference to people who choose their resides schools.
Well, the resides, now you're, you're talking about Klondike going at Myers, so what, what will Klondike be? What will that resides be?
So, what we're going to do, if, if this proposal is approved, is that we would make a very minor change to the resides boundary for, for the Reach Academy at, at the new building, essentially to take into the school, and I think a church or something else like that, but like, no, no, no students would move, but it would be within the resides boundary.
Ms. Westlin?
My question is, and I talked to Dr. Hargans about this, when I have envisioned the innovative schools ideas, it's been to really jump-start schools that are really struggling, and students that are struggling, and the Reach Academy seems particularly designed to do that, because of the extra services, and as Ms. Duncan said, the kind of idea that it would be a school that families could, families could access easily. And, and I understand the facility need, but I see Klondike as not a super-low-performing school, you know, and it's in a cluster with other schools that are performing pretty well, and they can draw from. And I, I think I know that we're looking at the former Myers Building, but I hope you all will think about, you know, even if it's just a K through five school, and you keep it at that, look, there, I've got the scores here, there's some schools that aren't performing very well, and could really use that. So I don't really understand why we're picking Klondike out of, out of that. Have you, I assume you've talked about this a little bit.
We, we have.
Just be honest, why, why not pick some of these others that are, you know, almost 20 points below where they're scoring?
So, there were a number of factors. We, we, we had a set of criteria that we were using to, to look at a difference, at a, at a set of schools, and there were other schools that, that are lower-performing that were also on that list. One of the challenges was to think about how you fit a K-8 school into a smaller-
But I want to challenge you all to think about, just because we approved something that said, well, you've got to have a K-8 school, well, you can come back and say, you know, let's do this K-5. And, you know, and I know Dr. Hargans thinks, has, her idea's a good one, that she, she's heard that sometimes families pull their kids out of JCPS middle school, so maybe if they're in elementary, they'll move on up. But you can be a little flexible and bring us back an idea that's a little different than the one we voted on, just, just because we said, you do this, you don't have to do it that way, you just need to make sure we know. So, I'd really like to see a, a lower-performing school get that attention. That's my thought. But I, I just, I just don't see Klondike being that needy, or, or most schools in that cluster be in that needy. Price in that cluster has scores lower than Klondike, so that one, and then the others I, I think are quite a bit higher, maybe quite a bit higher, I don't know, I haven't digested all of this, but that's what I think. I think if we're going to invest, we've got to bring up some of these really low-performing kids.
Well, and the K-8 was an important part of the concept, so as the team looked at the different schools that could accommodate it, the K-8 was an important, and we've looked at, and I think Dr. Razor has looked at other schools, and it doesn't accommodate the K-8. So you really alter the, what the vision of the school was when you don't make it K-8. Did you want to add anything?
I believe that in a model such as this, too, you want to make sure that you have the infrastructure and the capacity to implement with fidelity what they're trying to do, that the concept team's trying to do. And I know one of their ideas, when we sat around and talked, was, maybe we can be a model for other schools. And I think what you want to give yourself is the best chance for success, and I can't say, Ms. Westlin, that that was our defining reason for doing this, but there are, there are a lot of struggling kids at Klondike. There are a lot of free and reduced lunch kids at Klondike, and the, the English-as-a-second-language population in that area, in that resides, is skyrocketing, and just in that, in that general area. So I believe, you know, and one of the things we, we have to look at sometimes is an economy, economy of scale. There, there are 400 free and reduced lunch kids at Klondike. That's more than some struggling schools have in enrollment. But I, I do hear your point, and there, what we, I mean, we had a list of schools that, that you could have identified, but for this one, we thought this was our best chance for success with a site, with a location, too, that the concept founders had sort of in mind to begin with. They, they, they made this with the children they serve in mind.
That's a really good answer, but I still have the question about whether it's the right place, because you could even look at a low-performing, there are some low-performing middle schools that have low-performing elementaries that feed right into them, so even if they're not connected in the same building, they could be a partner schools, you know, a low, with a, I wouldn't even begin to mention which middle school, because I'd say the wrong thing, and it would be a stupid thing. But I just, I just hope you all really look at, not just because there's a building there, but really serving the lowest income and lowest-performing kids and their families.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not one to speculate, because I find that gets you in trouble, but-
You're being that same.
Well, no, but I, again, I would say that, that I think what we're giving ourselves is the best chance for success at this location, and I think it's a lot easier, and this is where the speculation comes. I think it's a lot easier three, four years from now, if we're showing success in a location like this, and we have to make some hard decisions about schools, because we'd want to create a similar model, that might mean combining, or, again, that's just pure speculation.
Well, I'll say one more thing, and that is, there's a lot of money going into this Reach Academy, I glanced at the budget, and boy, there are schools, again, with the lowest-performing kids that won't get that extra money. It'll be going here, where they're doing okay right now, and Klondike's coming along, and, and there'll be less money to go to a, some of these others I've circled here. So, please, 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 keep that in mind.
I have a quick comment as we talk about schools that are low-performing. I understand that you've given us your best recommendation based on conversations that you've had, and we have to start somewhere, I understand that as well, but there are a lot of components in the Reach Academy that could be used in other schools. I don't know how we pay for that, but there are other schools that are low-performing that could embrace some of the characteristics of the Reach Academy. So I am asking that as we move forward, that we look at some of the things that have been presented to us as we talk about schools that are low-performing schools, because I think each board member may have at least one, some of us have more than one, but the question, and the challenge becomes, how do we make our services available, access and opportunity for all students? And we do have low-performing schools. One size does not fit all, and we have done a lot this year to try to put more money in the local schools, but when I reviewed this concept, again, last night, multiple times, when you see things like community partnerships, smaller class sizes, iPads for each student, medical, dental, healthcare, family services, family therapy, adult education, job shadowing, all of those services could be used multiple places in the Jefferson County Public School District. I understand that it is your job to make a recommendation to us, that's what you have done. We are not going to get through this presentation, it is now five after six. I would ask that we bring this back at the next meeting as a work session, because there's still questions to be answered, and I think we're scheduled to vote on this, but before we can vote on it, we have to understand what we're voting on. So I thank you for what you've done this evening. We are not finished. It will come back to the next board meeting as a work session. Is that agreeable with everyone on the board?
That's correct, there was no intent to vote on this, it's to give you more information and answers to your questions.
Yeah, I think we, so, I would have loved to have this data ahead of time, the presentation ahead of time. I think now that we have it, maybe one thing we could do is, we can all digest it and have some discussion about, are we ready to bring it forward for a vote? Because there've been great comments, but if we understand the proposal, we, we're probably, my guess is we're at the point where we ought to say yea or nay, and if we're going to support it, then away it goes, and you guys have to figure out how to implement it. If we're not, then we can send them back to come up with another, you know, another iteration of it at a different time. But I, I'm wary of devoting work session after work session to two schools out of the great many that we oversee.
I just also want to put forward that, you know, I, I think having the opportunity to fully understand what's going on is critically important. At the same time, just in terms of being able to be responsive to families who need to make choices beginning in November, and all of the things that go to making that happen, we're, we're getting close to the time when a decision needs to get, get made on, on how we're proceeding.
Right, because that communication, and some of the slides are about communication, that's really important, that we communicate, and the, the parent meetings that happen, there's a little summary of the parent meetings, so, but communication is an entire slide, that that's really important, so that people know what the choices are and what it entails.
So what I think I heard the board say is that we want to come back, although it's same two schools, to make sure we have the information. Now that we have the PowerPoint presentation, we could arrange to have meetings with you, I guess Jonathan and others, if we have questions, based on the PowerPoint presentation. I think it's really critical for the board, when possible, if possible, to see the information before we walk in the room, because it leaves us at an absolute disadvantage, and that's what you, has happened this evening. We've asked a lot of questions, because we are just receiving this information. So, we thank you for what you've done, but we have other questions, so the board is that can check with the superintendent and make arrangements to have these questions answered. There's more to, for us to understand as we move forward, but the time is not our friend right now, because we have to make a decision. So thank you for what you've done tonight. We look forward to hearing more information. Is anything else from the board? Ms. Westlin?
I do have one question about these, all the proposals. I glanced toward the end and saw we were going to talk briefly about the museum school and the next-generation school. We kind of approved all four, you know, when we got together, and, and it looked like you all were trying to move those two also pretty quickly. If, I mean, I know we want to be innovative and bold, but if we can't do all that well that fast, please be honest about it. We, we're, we can handle that information. If we can't do, in fact, I, you know, I don't, the next-generation school, I, that's that thing, I think that has a whole lot of work, they didn't even have their proposal very developed, so we don't have to implement all of those next year. You know what I mean? I, I think we ought to keep that in mind.
And you might remember that Liberty and Phoenix, those schools had looked at the strategies that were in next generation, so the intent never was to implement a whole school, but to utilize the strategy. Now with Metro Museum, just to give you an update, we reconvened the partners as we said that we would, and that was a great meeting, because we talked about what if you could incubate this school with existing facilities within the museums? And they started talking about the spaces they have within museums. And what if, because you'd be moving between the museums, it was a third, fourth, and fifth? And what if there were two classes per each grade level, and you would be really reaching toward the kids that hadn't been as successful as you had hoped? Could you do that as a way to start the school and really engage the concept? So the thinking, what I have to say about all these conversations, it's been a great catalyst for thinking different than what a school looks like, and more about what's going to meet the needs of students and what's going to engage them in learning. So we're having a meeting on Friday, so when we come back for the next session, we will have logistics and tactical, where would each group of kids be for the 175 days, or for at least the first semester, so that you could envision a school that wasn't in the same building all the time.
Well, and it's not like all the other schools that we have, but-
Exactly.
It's important for us to know a little bit about those other two as we think about that.
Right, thank you for asking.
But, but again, I just, I know you all are heroes, but sometimes you need to, we need to be realistic about what's really doable for the kids, you know, and, and so-
Well, and Dr. Hargans, is there a timeline that KDE has given us for implementing our innovation schools, our choices?
No, no, you're in the driver's seat, because we brought those proposals to you, and you approved the first two, and told us to go back and look at the other two. So no, we're in the driver's seat, there's no KDE requirement. But again, we have kids, I would say the sense of urgency is around, we have kids that aren't, that aren't getting what they need from us. In the same way, if we continue to do the same things that we do, we're going to get, keep getting the same results. So that was really what drove the districts of innovation, is reaching kids in different ways.
Thank you very much. We will be back at seven for our regular meeting. Thank you.